Call to order, a special council meeting. Uh, we need to do a roll call.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Silver.
President.
Mr. Hobbs.
Here.
Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. President, I have a statement to read from Mr. Charles Smith. He says the sheriff's office is in a transition period at this time and that he did not receive the notice until Monday, and he wanted that to be read into the record.
Okay, so it's reading to the record.
Okay.
Okay. Item number one.
Is to consider adoption of a resolution to consider endorsing a tax implement financing TIF district from the O.K. Allen Bridge to Willoughby Glen River Road.
Okay. Um, like, uh... Who sponsored this?
I'd like, uh...
Yeah. Ms. Law?
I know it's a motion, it's item number one, I actually like to make a substitute motion, but I would, uh, I guess we have to move for a discussion, then I'd like to make a substitute motion.
I say...
Change the resolution.
I say move to discussion.
I say move to discussion.
Move to discussion. Yeah, while we're in discussion, who sponsored this?
We put it later on.
We, we, we... Representative, uh...
He sponsored it to the council.
I did.
Okay. For the record, you sponsored it to the council.
Well, what I did, uh, at the request of Mr. Dixon, came to me as president, and I had called a meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, Ms. Dixon, would you...
I want to, I want to first thank Mr. Marshall, members of the council, for allowing me this opportunity to stand before you to talk about what I think is a very important piece of legislation if we get out of this room to the next level. And I want to just give you a little summary of my mindset as we talk about this. First of all, as you know, I was elected October the 20th of last year. For many years, we all talked about a better Alexandria, things that we can be about as a community, economic development opportunities that we ought to see. And it became apparent to me, looking in years back, what our forefathers did in this community. And to give you examples, and I referenced this at the last Wednesday meeting, when we had Russell Long, Dave Trine, Gillis Long, and the list goes on with our congressional delegation, they worked for a navigable Red River. And in their comments, the intended purpose were for economic development opportunities for those communities adjacent to the Red River. Alexandria stands in an excellent location to take advantage of that. And the ASID was developed back in 1999, and since that time, that organization has worked with community leaders and stakeholders in this community, endorsed by the chamber in later years for the activities that it brought about on the possibilities of what could be on the Red River. In conversations with leaders in this community, we see an excellent opportunity for a tax incremental district that spreads from O.K. Allen Bridge to Willoughby Glen Road. Now, since that last Wednesday meeting, and I'm so glad that everyone is here, because we need to get to a situation whereby we find out if the community is for this or if it's not for this. And through this governmental body, we ought to be able to see if that's going to be the case. Several things I want to reference. First of all, this document is still a working document. One of the things that I knew right off as a high school teacher, I don't, I do not have the legal expertise to argue with anybody that have a bona fide legal degree, not going to do that. I have a vision that I think I share with the citizens in this community, that we need to move forward and take advantage of economic opportunities. But because I'm limited in that area, I'm not limited in understanding there are individuals in this community with the best expertise to continue to guide this effort for a TIF. And to that end, Clifford Moller with Gator, to that end, Heather Urina with the Cachet Delta, to that end, Elton Poty with the Chamber of Commerce, and to that end, Mr. John Miller with the Rapids Area Foundation. All of these are economic development personnel that has gone through this document line by line, and they are offering advice to me on changes that needs to be made. This is an open process. Anyone with fears, any anticipation that this is something that's going to tear at the fabric of our community and do harm to any other business, you're greatly misled. Great care has been taken to make sure this is something that we all can be proud of, and we all have to buy into it for us to make it a reality. Now, I asked, you have these enormous resources available to you once you start wearing this button here. Y'all saw it. But Chris said I wear it too much, you know? But one of the things, I have a sheet here, I hope I, I want to just reference right quick. Let me give you some of the areas that have taken off with this concept while we sit in the mud and we stay in the mud and not move. There are situations whereby individuals have turned dirt, put projects in place in their inner cities while we're still drawing pictures and arguing among each other. I firmly believe we got to move on, and that's going to be a passion of mine, and I'm not going to yield to that unless you say yield to that. You need to know that, number one. Number two, Monroe, Alexandria, Alcaljuza, Lake Charles, excuse Alexandria, Alcaljuza, Lake Charles, Washington, New Orleans, East Baton Rouge, Jefferson. These are some of the places that have taken full advantage of TIF to attract industry to their locale. We must believe in it because we have Union Tech Car Company, and there were incentives given there for that to take place. We must believe in it because we have Startech. I'm simply saying, folks, this is an excellent time for us to move on. Now, I'm not going to preach, I'm going to save the rest of my sermon for a little, a little later. There's three parts to this program. Going to ask Mr. Jay Lynch to come back up and let you see the visual effect of what has been worked on for many, many years and the potentials that exist for us. I want that to be a burning impression in everybody's mind here, and so, Mr. Lynch, if you would, you do that first?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Dixon, and I think I've made presentations throughout the community for a number of years now, so hopefully this won't be anything new for this council. And just want to share with you some of the graphics that we've prepared to try to convey some of the images and opportunities that do exist and some concepts of that. And this is the same graphic that the council has in front of them. And we'll just start out. We're a consultant for the Alexandria Central Economic and Development District and have been developing a concept for riverfront development for the last three or four years. And this board describes a general concept, the opportunities that we have seen and have talked with certain community members about riverfront potential. I'll just have to point it out. Riverfront stretches across our community and essentially the urban section of our town extends out to Lower Third Street. The focus of our effort is to try to follow some concepts of smart growth and the opportunity that exists to take advantage of the existing infrastructure that is in place within the urban core and the infrastructure provided by I-49, certainly the river and the transportation network. And so what we're suggesting is that we focus development into a smaller footprint and take advantage of, of the compactness of a downtown core area and opportunities of adjacent land that it put together and put into play can create some economic development opportunities. What you see up towards the O.K. Allen Bridge is one boundary of our development, past the Alexandria-Pineville Expressway and then south along Third to an area of, past Bogans Street right here. What we envision are opportunities for a riverfront marina development, which will house 150 boat slips, dry docking for another, an additional 300, a marina store for food, water, gas, ice, and beverage, development of potential for riverfront restaurants, sites for riverfront restaurants, an improved festival fairground, and an improved festival performance pavilion that could seat up to 2,500 persons. Then a safe vertical edge along the river that ties in with existing development for the original running park, the boat ramp, crossing Bayou Rapids on Red River Waterway property, extending over the dikes that are out in the river. We envision an elevated more that will encompass additional development opportunities for commercial and park-like environments, and then, of course, tying it into the existing convention tourism infrastructure that we have with the Riverfront Center, the Convention Center, the Convention Hotel, and the Hotel Bentley, tying it further into the arts with the Alexandria Museum of Art, City Hall, Third Street, and the Kaufman Saunders Theater. Extending and improving that Third Street corridor provides an opportunity to link the riverfront to the core improvements and the infrastructure that has been in place and that this city has developed over time, such as the Riverfront Center, the Convention Center, the hotel property. We see opportunities now with the expansion of Rapids Regional Medical Center over Fourth Street to improve and provide a arterial connector that extends and connects Upper Third back through to Broadway. And this utilizes an existing couplet of Sixth and Seventh Street, provides for an extension across Bayou Rapids, picks up the existing infrastructure to Upper Third, crosses under the Alexandria-Pineville Expressway, connects through the Brodersky property, and then eventually to Broadway Avenue. So again, we're trying to bring things together and connect important elements of our community together. We've listed in this document just a variety of projects that we've identified along the One of which, in addition to the riverfront development, we start to see opportunities to redevelop certain areas of the community and the opportunity to put large tracts of land into play for economic development. For instance, this area between Pineville Expressway and Broadway Avenue, kind of a pink-colored block just south of the river. That area is deteriorated open land, and we've identified that as a potential site for a multi-purpose arena, and that was discussed and presented a while back at some of the arena communities that we've attended. That ties in with the existing infrastructure of highways, new proposed couplet, and provides an opportunity to bring into play an economic engine in close proximity to the downtown area. So visitors that might come here and find a recent stay overnight will have hotel rooms and certainly the traffic and, and transportation infrastructure available to make it convenient and easy to access to. The other option we say is to consider the Ruston Foundry Site, the original six acres and the additional tract of 30-plus acres that KCS is offering, and combining that with some surrounding property and extending that back along the frontage of I-49. That, again, when you put together a large tract of land like this, it creates opportunities, and we've identified one as a possibility for light commercial or an alternate site for the arena or the possibility of a discount law. The other portion of this is our effort to consider redevelopment of certain areas along Third Street with existing neighborhoods that are landlocked and seem to be deteriorating and afford an opportunity if and when we, when we get a marina in place, because that's becoming a more of a reality as each day passes, to consider adding value and redeveloping portions of this deteriorated neighborhood for mixed use and other potential for urban housing close to the downtown core. Much like what happened with Rapids Regional Medical Center when this was a large residential tract adjacent to the hospital, land was purchased and put together and put into play for expansion of the hospital. To a large degree, the same thing happened with the downtown convention facility here. Our marina has received concept approval by the Corps of Engineers, and they've authorized the next level of design and engineering. And the marina is at the Upper Third area, at the large extent of bachelor land. The Red River is here, and the O.K. Allen Bridge is here. We've offset this development to allow for future expansion of the new bridge, and the court has looked at this and feel, after reviewing some of the detailed drawings that we've developed, feel that it is ready to go to the next level. And we've taken preliminary drawings to a further state of engineering development and have furnished to the core that information. They've given us permission to do a geotechnical survey and investigation along that stretch of the river, and we're then authorized to move forward with what we call the first phase of the riverfront development project, which we designate as the marina project. But it's more than just the marina project, it's the vertical edge, the other ancillary facilities that will enhance that stretch of river from the O.K. Allen Bridge to Bayou Rapids. Included with that is a way to bring people through the levee into and back up the bachelor land, providing parking and enhanced festival site and a performance pavilion, and opening up an undeveloped section of land that has been part of our city for many, many years. What we see is the tremendous potential of this stretch, because as we did actual survey information, we found that that land is at or above the 50-year flood level. With the development of the marina, we can bring the land up to a higher level to get up to the 100-year flood. So that encourages development along the stretch of the river. The visuals that we prepared to show the marina are just pretty straightforward. It shows a fairly attractive pool stage. Pool stage is 64 elevation to the river. Most of the time of the year, it does fluctuate about 15 feet. We have floating docks and facilities that will allow the rise and fall of the river. We've protected the marina inlet from the heavy barge traffic that's anticipated with the development. So this is the presentation. Got any questions? Glad to...
So, project's overall cost of the entire project?
The entire project, that includes four or five phases, is $45 million. The first phase that we're working on now is approximately $10 million, uh, $15 million, I'm sorry, $15 million. And we've got a history of getting federal appropriations, state appropriations, and I think we have a budget line item in for the city for a $250,000 appropriation that will be matched by the Red River Waterway Commission. And we've just got indication of a hundred grand today, notification of that. So we've used the money to do the initial planning, to get the topographic surveys, look forward with the engineering studies and the geotechnical. We have an economic impact study underway under contract that will do a marketing feasibility and impact, not only for the riverfront development, but for the entire scope of this riverfront and downtown core. And that will be underway with deliverable in about four months.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Before Mr. Moller come back up, I just want to make several more points. The question could legitimately be asked, why are we having a special meeting of the council at this time when we gave notification of the prospect of a TIF bill for the regular session, which starts on March the 31st? Here's the rationale for that, so everyone will be on the same page. We knew that the notification by state law must be done. We wanted it to be done in a timely fashion. Number one, to stir conversation, to move the ball forward, to have the dialogue begin in earnest about where we go from here. But number two, if we do it early enough and then we get, we get a confirmation, there was a chance that we could be on the special call agenda, which starts at 6:00 PM this Sunday, which is going to be dealing with taxes and the disbursement of over $1 billion in surplus money. So, the TIF is for the regular session. However, and here's your other updates. Talked to Speaker Jim Tucker this morning in Cliff Moller's office, ran over what this, what this, this bill does, asked for his consideration to move us and put us on the special agenda coming up. He thinks that's doable, and we're going to try to finalize that before we start. Here's the second reason for inspiration. We had a Wednesday meeting where everyone was asked to come to participate, throw out your best shots, what's good, what's bad, is this where we want to go, is it going to hurt our citizens? That was the rationale for that meeting, because I certainly don't have the expertise to put all what we need in there. We had that earnest, earnest dialogue, but the day after that meeting, Senator Mary Landrieu called. My assistant called me and said, you need to be in your office at 10:00 AM. Mary Landrieu, Senator Landrieu is going to call you. Well, I'm thinking, hey, she's running for an election, this one of those conference calls, look, I need your help. She called to congratulate me on the meeting that happened Wednesday. Some folks in that meeting talked to her, and she said, I want to be on board. This is the lady that's over there, in the appropriation committee, okay? One of our most senior congressional folks. I'm not the, sharp as knife in the drawer, but I understand what opportunities present them, them saying, okay? Now, not only did she say that, she said, look, there is a development, some of you may know, in Baton Rouge that has over $900 million in private funds that she works closely with for smart growth, and I can't tell you what smart growth means. Don't ask me, okay? But she said, this is Mary Landrieu, and press, please follow up on this. She said, I'm going to give you my smart growth person to help guide you through this. And I begged her assistant, because I told her, we need to move this. She said, I've always been on board that this need to happen for Alexandria. That's Senator Mary Landrieu. You just saw the pretty drawing. A lot of that money for those pretty drawings come from Congressman Rodney Alexandria, getting what they call, what that special language they use, those earmarks, for to develop the Red River. Folks are not the smartest person out here, you know? If he's doing it, he wants us to turn some dirt at some point, okay? At some point. All right. Now, I'm going to get clear for you, but I want to just make two more, two more observations right quick. And when we finish, we're going to show you the TIF boundaries, as per those ED advisors where they feel the boundary line should be, and then I'm going to move back. But yesterday, I had to be at the last engagement of the Transportation Road Show. I'm on the Transportation Committee. We traveled the length and breadth of Louisiana. You know, we go to Boja, Shreveport, we've been to Monroe, we've, we've Lafayette, Lake Charles, and with these eyes have seen, folks, we are behind. We are behind, folks. And I'm from right here, and I'm 58 years old, and so we're behind. And then the last leg was in Harrahham, and the folks that came up united, requesting assistance from the Transportation Department, it was just, it was just like all other. Folks are unified, and they want to move forward. But I had to come back. I have a mother that's ill that's having surgery as we speak, and I had to come back, but I also had to make one more stop. And I'm going to give this information to the president of the council, Tavester Scott. He's president of AVI Southwest Incorporated. Called and said, is there any way you can meet with me? I said, it'll have to be when I'm passing back through Baton Rouge, I have a transportation meeting. He, this guy has his hands on all kinds of financial companies that want to do business here, and they specifically, Ms. Harris, want to do business with the Third Street Group, with that part of what Jay said about the Ruston Foundry area, looking at an outlet mall. That's happening now while we're here, and I hope we're not going to be scratching and clawing at each other about something that is so obvious to me. But I'm set up. Cliff Moller, will you please come up? Moller, let's go.
Look, I was asked to come up and speak on the TIF, but more importantly, I was, was one of about four others who were requested to look at a draft document written by the legislative attorneys in Baton Rouge to address a TIF legislation. It was very broad. There were a lot of inconsistencies in that document, and Mr. Representative Dixon suggested that we look at it and just give him some advice on where to start with this document. The document was not one that we were looking to adopt today. It takes a great deal of effort to look at this type of legislation and to make it work for everyone. It will take many meetings like this before any legislation is finally adopted. All members and all stakeholders will be buying into it. We just started the ball rolling with a blank, well, not a blank document, with a template, and we started making adjustments to it to give Representative Dixon an opportunity to start shaping something for our city. I have to say, we addressed this two years ago in Baton Rouge, and we never had a meeting like this. The fact that you are here today, the fact that he was able to put a meeting together last week, is a strong, is a strong indication, one, that there is interest, and two, that more than just a few people in a room are making decisions. We don't, the committee that was charged with looking at the draft, we don't pretend that the, the adjustments that we made are the final adjustments. We also said in that meeting that these adjustments were for Mr. Dixon to look at and take to the public, which is what he will do. We delineated some boundaries for this district, and if Jay would put that up, I appreciate And these boundaries are not written in stone. With further discussions going on?
What's that?
With further discussions, they may change, but we made it a very broad area. We started from the center of the Red River. From the center of the Red River to the O.K. Allen Bridge on Highway 71 to Highway 49, I-49, going south to Willoughby Glen River. I-49, going south to Willoughby Lane Road.
To Baguette.
Pardon me?
To the Baguette.
To, to the Willoughby Lane Road, then to the, then that Willoughby Lane Road to Broadway.
I can't see Willoughby Lane.
I'm sorry, this is Willoughby Lane right here.
We encompassed. It's the, it's the boundary of the last street.
Yeah, Willoughby Lane here, to Broadway, down to the Bayou, around, then to Willoughby Lane here. So it's to, back to the middle of the river. So the middle of the river, we're going to reverse it. The Willoughby Lane to the Bayou, to Broadway, back here to I-49, then we're going north to I-49 again.
What, my?
Back to O.K. Island Bridge to the middle of the river. Again, that's not written in stone, but we encompassed a large area. We encompassed an area that one needs to develop. One of the, one of the points that you addressed when you are going to operate a TIF or legislate a TIF is blank. We consider that with the area on the southern portion of Third Street in this area, this TIF could benefit the redevelopment of this area, especially from the river going back. All of these properties would be, would be affected, as well as all of the properties in the downtown from I-49 going through the river. This is a possibility that, that, that can happen for downtown and spread to the rest of the area. That is the, the purpose of it, to create possibilities, to create increased value in some areas, and it will spill over to adjacent areas. That is the purpose of it. Our suggestions, again, are with Representative Dixon, but just to let this group know, there are about, there are a minimum of five steps that this process has to go through before legislation is actually adopted. The first one is initiate, is initiation, which is what we are starting right now. Discussions about what it is, where it is, what goes into it. The second is a formulation, which is actual, the actual formulation of the document and the, the information that will go in it. Then comes adoption, and that speaks for itself, then implementation, which is critical. And in doing so, that particular district, let's assume that those lines stay. A district will be formed that will have members, and those members will come from the community, from the administration, from the city council, and from other groups in and around the, the city. And then the last component is evaluation and termination, meaning we evaluate what happened over the number of years, how was the money spent, what did we achieve, and then the termination of the district. It doesn't usually go on forever, but some have gone in, gone on into perpetuity. But the usual range is from 20 to 30 years. So we're not talking about something that's going to happen overnight, or something that's going to last for three or five years, or happen in three or five years. We're talking about a long-term process. We're talking about starting the process now, we're talking about today. Look around, look at the person in front of you, and back of you, next to you, and we didn't do this two years ago. I handed the city council a document two years ago when we were talking about TIFs. If you all remember this, I put it in each one of these mailboxes, as well as the mayor. This basically gives a format on how a TIF was, is established. This is not the only one. They have them all over the internet. It's just a matter of picking out the one you like the most. I like this one because it's from the National Association of Realtors. It also gives case studies around the country about how TIFs started. It also gives legal objectives, objections to TIFs, and I think it is very worthwhile for everyone to read. We have made copies of this in our office, we've actually given them all out. We had 20 of them last Wednesday, and they were given out almost immediately. We'll make more. This is available to you. Our job began on that committee was to assist Representative Dixon with starting a dialogue. I think he's done a wonderful job of doing that. I think, again, two years ago, we didn't have this type of a meeting, and I think that we should support what he is trying to attempt to do today.
Mr. Moller?
Yes?
I have a question.
Yes?
How many public meetings have there been on this issue prior to this meeting being called, that have weighed in on what is going to be in this TIF and what's not going to be?
I don't think that.
I'm not talking about.
This president's. I have a presentation, I have a presentation now. I'm getting ready to wrap up, and you can entertain courses and go on from there. I'm getting ready to wrap up. And here's how I would like to wrap up. I'm a state representative now. I work for you. We've given it our best effort to make this open, a very open process to move forward, and, and it's still a work in progress, as Mr. Moller indicated. There are several hurdles. This is the first one. The government body ought to back the legislation that I'm proposing to the legislature. If they don't, I ought not propose it, and I won't. So this is the first hurdle. Second hurdle, if there's going to be one, there's supposed to be individuals somewhere that don't like TIF and is dead on arrival. But if that's the case, that person evidently don't work for you like I work for you, and I feel if we're all on one page, we continue this ball going. This is our opportunity, it's right now. There's no excuses for us not to move forward. We help so many people, we start so many business opportunities because we say in earnest, not with drawings, not with rhetoric, we say in earnest that we are open for business in Alexandria. And Mr. President, council member, thank you for this time, and I sincerely hope you endorse a resolution supporting me and this effort.
And, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'm going to read this resolution, I'll make it available for those that may be interested. The resolution reads, whereas the development of the area adjacent to and within the proximity of the Red River, the City of Alexandria would like to provide tremendous economic benefits to the city, parish, and region, whereas Alexandria's Central Economic Development District, under the leadership of Jeffrey Hall and his consultants, has produced a clear, concise vision for the development and growth of the riverfront area. Whereas implementation of a properly funded action plan for the development of growth of the riverfront would create hundreds of construction jobs, millions of dollars in construction-related expenditures, create hundreds, and eventually thousands of full-time and part-time jobs would, which would generate millions of dollars in wages and salaries to the local and parish residents. Would also induce private developers, entrepreneurs, and establish companies to engage in business activities within the riverfront area, further stimulating the local parish economies and sparking a wide-spirit revitalization of the riverfront area. Whereas Representative Herbert Dixon has recognized the efforts of ACIT Board to and acknowledge the clear, concise vision, and he has laid out the development and growth of the riverfront area, and understood the need for, and the need to initiate legislation in the upcoming 2008 regular session of the Louisiana State Legislature to expedite this process. Whereas Representative Herbert Dixon has issued a call for all stakeholders, elected officials, civic leaders, and private citizens to get involved in providing input into the proposed legislation, and has conducted and intends to continue to conduct conversations and meetings with all stakeholders over the remaining days before the start of the upcoming regular session and its formal introduction of the proposed legislation. Whereas it is time for all stakeholders in the City of Alexandria to work together for a common good. Therefore, be it resolved, the City of Alexandria, through the city council, expresses deep gratitude for Representative Herbert Dixon for recognizing and acknowledging and supporting the efforts of ACIT Board and its consultants to provide a vision for economic development, one of the City of Alexandria, for one of the City of Alexandria's main assets, the Red River, expressed its strong support in its efforts to introduce legislation in the upcoming 2008 regular session of the State of Louisiana, and provide a mechanism for funding to the, to make the vision of economic development along the riverfront a reality. We endorse his call to the stakeholders, elected officials, civic leaders, and private citizens to get involved in providing input to the proposed legislation prior to the formal introduction to the legislature. We also urge that Mayor Jack Roy, State Senator Joe McPherson, Representative Chris Roy Jr., Representative Chris Hazel, be united in their support of Representative Herbert Dixon's legislative agenda in this matter. It also encourages Governor Bobby Jondo, the President of the Senate, Joel Chaisson, to support Representative Dixon's legislative agenda in this matter. It urges area governmental entities, civic organizations, and associations, and private citizens to adopt resolutions and letters in support of Representative Dixon's efforts, and forward the same to our legislative delegation. Now, therefore, the city clerk is authorized and directed to forward with due haste to all main parties here and to the public a copy of this resolution. And I'd like to make a resolution that we submit, make a motion that we submit this resolution today, I'll move it further.
Remove, second amendment, no discussion?
I want to make it clear that this resolution does not endorse a TIF. I don't know how some of the folk in the room have gotten misconstrued that a resolution was going to endorse a TIF. I saw some of the language that may have been a little misleading. I think it'd be premature, certainly on my perspective, to endorse this. I received it a couple of days ago. I have some things I certainly would like to suggest to the representative. What I am concerned about is anybody trying to dampen his desire to do something that's beneficial for this community. I think it's beneficial to do something, and I think a TIF when used correctly, benefits a community. This benefits an area that's been deprived, quite frankly, of assistance. When you look at the Third Street area, I've heard it time and time again, not only as a police juror, but certainly as a city councilman at large, why don't we do something? I hear it about downtown, I hear it certainly about other areas in which this can affect. Whatever the boundaries may happen to be in the group such as this come up with and decide in concert with our delegation, then it is what it is. But that does not mean that this will be the only TIF possibly that makes sense. For us to pour cold water on this and dampen this, shame on us. I heard it when I was on the England Authority as an original member, that we ought to leave the airport where it was. And how fitting was the story today to say we didn't listen to those that thought the airport was doing just fine where it was. Mr. Dixon, Representative Dixon, I wholeheartedly support your effort to try to do something to bring this community together. I like the word stakeholders, that's what we have in this room. I think we certainly need to embrace all the folk in this room. Representative Chris Roy, I don't see whether this may tap into his district, he's certainly a stakeholder, and should be concerned about what happens in this district. So should Chris Hazel, and I appreciate both of their concerns in this matter.
Mr. Moller, I may not interrupt, but since I'm being placed in this resolution, I'd certainly like to make my voice heard.
Absolutely.
And if I may take a minute to say that.
Yeah. I yield to the representative, but I'm actually going to conclude by saying this, it's a beginning. As, as we deal with the England Authority, there was a lot of dissension, a lot of concerns, and rightfully so, rightfully so here too. But what I'm saying is, let's come up with something and make it work, and I yield to Representative.
If I may, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and rest of the council members. Just so I'm, I'm clear about where I stand on this. Mr. Dixon is my colleague, we sit right by each other, we joke and laugh and do a lot of things together. And Ms. Lawson, I appreciate your substitute motion. I think that's a step in the right direction. I think all of us are stakeholders. I represent part of Alexandria, I represent La Count, I represent Voice. Those are communities that are dying on the vine. So when you come here and you talk about economic development, I have folks in Alexandria that I have to ask the questions. If, is there going to be an extra sales tax downtown that my people I represent are going to say, well, wait a minute? If I'm going to go to a restaurant downtown and the sales tax are greater than they are where I am, does that really make sense? But I'm not going to belabor that point. I want to congratulate Herbert, he's, he's working very hard about this, but the, the issue is, all of us being stakeholders together, working not just about downtown, but bringing all of the district together, and doing some things that we developed this riverfront, but frankly, the process as it was, was not that. This is a, was a very sped-up process, in my opinion, and what we can now do is, based on your resolution, move forward, get it done, don't get me wrong, but do it in a manner that incorporates everyone, including the council, the administration, and everyone else, conspicuously lacking from this group where any discussions with the governing body and/or the administration at this point. Whether that was a, something that didn't happen because of the time limits, I don't care, I'm not passing judgment on that. I commend Mr. Dixon, I commend the council for coming up with a substitute motion that, as a representative who is going to be included in this, that I can take back to my constituents and say, look, we're all in this ship together. We need to work forward, move forward with the administration, with the council, and get this done, and I think your substitute motion clearly lays that out, that this document is a work in progress, because I can, you know, we have to, if our senator is not on board with this, we've got problems. And, you know, right now, we have to make sure, I know he's out of town, and I know he'd love to be here, but I don't think anyone is out to pour cold water on this. I think we want to get it done the right way, that we can sell, as the governor did in Ethics Reform, a vote of 105 to nothing, instead of 53 to 50, or 53 to 52. And that's what we need to make sure of. So I appreciate you yielding the floor to me to add those comments, and, and again, I will do my best to work with everyone to make sure that these areas that we need to improve do get improved, but with the benefit of everyone involved. Thank you all.
Let the record reflect that I abstain.
Why are you abstaining? Can you give a reason abstain for abstention? I'm not, I'm not trying to point to you, but I'm just curious, because this thing is not directed anything special.
Well, uh...
I didn't say you have to, but I'm just curious.
Well, I don't want any to be said that by my employment.
But you might have that conflict.
It might, I don't think it hurts.
I'm not objecting, because I have similar deals, but I don't have that constraint in as much as, as what Chris has just mentioned. It's all embracive, and I think we have a, to borrow...
I don't mind as a council, I don't, at the point of, I allow someone else to make the motion and then someone else to second. You pass the gap if you don't abstain.
I also move.
Motion's been properly seconded. You have a discussion on the resolution that we read.
Let me ask one question before we go any further. It's kind of not a bait and switch. We talked, started off talking about one thing, ended up with a different resolution. The original had attached to it a legislation for a TIF. Will this in any way be a part of this, as proposed, this, this draft that we have, Mr. Dixon?
No.
This will not in any way, because...
In your resolution?
No, sir. The draft that you gave to us for the TIF that, then we made a substitute resolution, and I don't know if this is part of it or not, but the original resolution, not resolution, but the original draft evidently prepared by the, your legal entity within the legislature. Is this going to be any part of it?
Yeah, that's the working draft that we're following as it be a sponsor deal.
Okay, well, a lot of things we didn't mention in the discussions about this, that the TIF would cover... the TIF would cover hotels, motels, and so forth. We never discussed that.
That's why we want to make it clear that it's a work in progress, as Representative...
If we're talking about this is one thing. We're talking about financing hotels and motels and all that, something else.
Something tells me we have some stakeholders that are going to have a lot of input, and rightfully so, so...
But this is a part of it. I can't support it.
Is it attached to it? Just on that, isn't it? It's not attached to it, as I understand Mr. Lawson's motion is a substitute motion.
I'm asking Representative Dixon if this is a part of it.
Well, the, the, this resolution has nothing to do with endorsing the TIF, doesn't it?
I don't know how you even know it's too early.
Yeah, that's how it is. Any other questions, uh, relative to the resolution that's on the floor? You're in all in favor? Aye? Oh?
Roll call.
Okay, that's a roll call. Madam question?
Mr. Lawson?
Yes?
Mr. Baller?
No, because of the environment of the TIF.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Silver?
I don't understand it. I have to ask the question again. I don't, according to your interpretation, it is merely a working draft and does not embrace any of that, it has to be massaged, is that your, is that your interpretation?
It's my, the resolution, I read it. Let me make it very clearly, because it looks like it's about to get misconstrued, this file. This is not endorsing a TIF. I thought I was clear on that. This is endorsing...
A concept.
A concept, working with the community, and for, as, as Representative Roy suggested, that they will be working collectively with Representative Dixon. They may come back and say, we don't need a TIF, but this is a work in progress. What we're doing is adopting the spirit of working together, is all this is, but, uh, I hope that cleared away.
No, this is capable of being massaged, and it will be, so that this is non-binding from the standpoint of how far it's going to go.
Absolutely.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Hobbs? Mr. Marshall?
Abstain.
All right, you have four yays and one no, one abstain, and one absent. So it passes.
All right. Pass it, go back to, pass.
That's it?
Representative Dixon?
I want to, I want to thank the council for the passage of this resolution. Extend myself to work with the administration and the stakeholders, the fire team, this draft, so we'll have something that we can deliver to the legislature that will move us forward. I want to thank you again.
Can I say something? Before we adjourn, I also want to thank you, but also, may I direct that you and legislators in the community get together and make certain that we, to borrow a phrase that we use till it's tired, get on the same page, so we can get something done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Really, like, due to, due to, uh, time constraints, uh, I think most of the questions that were on these, where folks wanted to speak, I think, I hope those questions have been answered, um, and I think they have. And I would maybe, at another time, maybe next council meeting, we might, uh, maybe give some time to it, if you'd like to speak. But right now, time is beating us. It's, it's no longer our friend, it's becoming enemy. So, uh, if, if you really want to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes, but if you'd like not to, I'd appreciate it.
I'm here? I'm sorry. Can I have three minutes, please?
Uh, let's see. Did you fill out one of these, Miss Underwood?
I'm not on the last one, but I'm sure the gentleman will.
Yeah, okay.
The gentleman that signed up is one of the persons that's going to be up here.
No. Uh, like I said, if anybody wants to speak, but like I said, time is becoming enemy.
Have sign up. Is it okay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. My name is Gail Underwood. I live at 5217 Raphael. Uh, Mr. Dixon, you represent my mother's district. Mr. Roy, you represent my district. Uh, I have some concerns about this, and I'll go real quickly through it because I only have three minutes, but as a taxpayer, I have a problem with writing a check and not having the money to cover it and raising our taxes. A lot of people can't afford right now to pay their utility bills. Uh, the sale pending of Holiday Inn Hotel Bentley, I would think would be a conflict of interest at this time with this matter. Uh, the mayor and staff, I understand, have just received the information within the last couple of days, and there seems to be a few technicalities that I would call into question. Uh, the displacement of money. Mr. Marshall, you represent my mother's district and my tenant's district, which I hold 25 properties over there now. I'm not bragging, but the conditions of the roads and the drains is terrible. Uh, conflict of interest. Mr. Marshall, I have a problem with you calling the hotel and motel owners into, uh, a conference room with another councilman when you work for a motel industry. I don't know the legalities, because I wasn't here at the last meeting to learn the proper rules of order, but I do question that. We voted several weeks ago to not extend our city limits into Kellyland because of taxing of our fire and police officer. I'm going through this real quickly because there are time and men. Basically, here is my concern. Nothing has been finalized on this in one week's time. Why are we voting on this? It seems we're signing a blank check and being told we will fill it out later. Don't worry about it. Many others share my concern, but maybe I'm just gun-shy or gutsy. However, history has given us reason to be that way. For example, McElroy contract, where $280,000 of taxpayers' money was sent and voted on, paid in $20,000 increments, no work has been done in the last three years. This, uh, contract was to develop the South Circle into a soccer and playing field. This cannot be done. We're tired of voting on contracts. We're tired of paying taxes. I urge Mr. Dixon, Mr. Roy, and Mr. Hazel, and I've urged citizens of Rapids and state of Louisiana to contact these members and their representatives and vote against this. Some of these motel and hotel dealers, from what I understand, are not going to benefit this. This will only benefit one or two places. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?